Let's stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Honorable Mayor Ron Chaver.
Here.
Councilmember Dan Marler.
Here.
Christine Casto.
Here.
Allison Howe.
Here.
Clint Anderson.
Here.
Lisa Northrup.
I'm here.
Kevin Lindell.
We have a silent partner tonight.
I'm her designated voice tonight.
Okay. First on the agenda is the approval of the resolution of the minutes from our February 21 city council regular meeting, Mr. Brennan.
Thank you, Your Honor. The draft minutes for the February 21 minutes were included in your packet and are presented per your approval by resolution.
Has everybody had a chance to review the minutes and are there any corrections? If there are none, I would entertain action to approve.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution accepting the minutes of the February 21, 2017, regular city council meeting.
Second?
I have a resolution by Christine Casto and a second by Allison Howe. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Next, we have a presentation on possible action by resolution on a memorandum of understanding with Mustang Baseball. Ms. Smith. Has changed.
Good after evening, I guess it is now. Good evening.
Late afternoon.
Late afternoon. It's been a long day. In your packets are the community event applications for the Mustang Baseball Club. They're requesting fields for practices throughout March and June, as well as fields and field preparation for games and tournaments. Additionally, the Mustang Baseball Club is requesting use of the lights at Legion Field. And with council's approval, the MOU will be updated accordingly. And the fees they're requesting to be waived are five fields for tournaments for two days equals $1,350, games for practices for 12 days, $3,240, 20 hours of practices on fields, an hour and a half each, equalling $1,350, and the usage of the lights, which comes to $2,100, speaking a grand total of $8,040. If you have any questions, I will do my best or turn those questions over to someone who knows.
So their request is for the Riverside Baseball Fields also?
Yes. The tournaments and games are on fields A and B, or the softball fields, and practices are on fields 1, 2, and 3.
So are they wanting waivers of the field prep and that also?
Yes.
Now, is that, does the field prep consist of before each game redoing them, or is it just once in the morning and?
Just once, I believe, in the morning or the day before they go out and prep the fields for games. There's no field prep for practices, just to clarify.
Okay, but on a tournament, is there field prep required just one time during the day?
I believe it is this morning. Yes.
And are those included in the sum you have for, under tournaments?
Yes, they are.
Great, okay. So this is all inclusive for everything? Okay.
So Mustang Baseball, is that a nonprofit organization?
They're registered 501(c)(3).
So, I guess for me, that's a lot of value that they're asking for. So I'm not sure of my question, I guess, but what, I want to think about it for a second, I guess.
Does anybody else have any question?
So, and this might be a question for you. Yeah, come on down. Come on down. So how many years has the city kind of done the same agreement with Mustang Baseball?
I don't have the exact total number of years, but this agreement has not been modified since 2011.
Okay.
The MOU, as it's been drawn up, has always included the tournament free. Practices and everything else Elizabeth has presented has also been waived historically. The one thing Mustang has done as part of their MOUs is write a $500 non-refundable deposit to the city for the use of the facilities.
Okay.
Which would still be an anticipation this year as well. The only real change to this year's request from the previous five years is the light use request at Legion Field now that the city owns that property.
Okay.
So, club sports traditionally make pretty good money. They charge the participants quite a bit. Are they charging, I guess I'm wondering why they can't pay for this, why should we give them a waiver on these costs?
What we've done is break down the fees as they've requested them as part of the in-kind, that amount obviously far exceeds the $1,000 we manage in-house. So, the MOU in practice has been that we've waived these fees.
One of the things, one of the things that we've done in the past is requested financial statements from 501(c)(3)'s to understand where the money's going. If there's a concern by council about how funds are being spent, we do have the right to request their financial statements to see how the money's being spent and where it's going. There could be a perfectly good explanation as to why they're charging what they're charging and requesting this, but if there's a concern, we can always request that they provide us their financial statements that they have to maintain for the IRS and, you know, let you know where the money's being spent so you have that understanding. But I think it's a valid question. It's not the first time it's come up, and that's why we've made it clear in the past that there may be a point that we need to request those. And I think we have in the past for Mustang Baseball requested their financial statements.
So, a question from Councilwoman Northrup. Is this consistent with what we do for other club teams?
Historically, the only two club teams that have utilized city services facility use has been Mustang Baseball and the Marlins Swim Team. Over the years of negotiations with myself, Mr. Wells, and supportive council, the Marlins have modified their arrangement with the city, and we no longer operate under an MOU. The Marlins Swim Team pays the annual swim pass fee for each of their swimmers, and based on such, we allow them to use our facility whenever they feel it's needed and necessary and appropriate, based on the fact that they're annual pass holders, and any added expense we'd have with a half hour swim time with some lifeguards and the chairs is recouped with the annual pass fee, which we historically have never collected. So, the only club currently in the in-kind business at this point right now is Mustang Baseball.
Is it possible? I can't do this. Get to work. Right, right. So, this just really clarifies, brings to head that we do need to have, yeah, the rec. department kind of go back and figure out what kinds of options we have moving forward for these kinds of waivers, since we don't have really solid, clear direction for every organization that comes in and asks for different fees waived.
What we're waiving is specifically the fees defined in the fee structure. So, in the fee structure that you approve annually as part of the budget process, it says to hold a tournament, it's $100 per field per day. And what we've done is the math for a tournament for five fields for two days at the $100 fee. Game prep is defined in the fee structure, $35 per day per field. That's also included in the fee structure. Practice is broken down, $15 per hour per field. Again, we've done that math. So the fees you're seeing, and the way the fee structure is designed, is when Doakes guys got to go down and use two cans of paint and chalk a field, that's part of the $35, and we're recouping that expense if we charge the fee. We don't charge the fee, you know, we don't recoup those expenses based on the fee waiver. And what I had previously presented a meeting or two ago, what's never recouped as part of the fee structure is Elizabeth's time, my time, Doakes' time, the coordination between making sure we've got the staff to turn on the lights, down there for supervision, as this still is, you know, sort of a risk management process as well, making sure fields are locked, unlocked, accessible, bathrooms are clean, lights are on for the games. Those things aren't built into the fee structure. It's really, the fee is designed to recoup the expense to the city and department, whether it be Doakes or Elizabeth, for materials used or otherwise. But practice has been that we waive these fees at 100%. We're not guesstimating fees, we're merely using the fee structure to assess the use of the facilities as the fee structure dictates.
Great. So, from Councilmember Northrup, is it possible to have a similar arrangement with Mustang Baseball, like the swim pass?
It is possible.
Or, pause, pause, or, is that something to set up during next year's budget? So like, we ride it out, we do the same process that we've traditionally done with this club team, and then move forward with some plans that are a little more equitable for next year's budget?
As an example, if we were to be consistent with what we've done with Marlins, we would charge Mustang Baseball what we charge every one of our taxpaying members of the public, which is $35 for their child to play baseball. And what that $35 does, I mean, it does give them a uniform, but that covers the cost, if you will, for Doakes Department to run the league, with the paint and the chalk and the staff hours and setup and prep and so on and so forth. So, it's kind of what we've done in an inadvertent way with Marlins. The general public pays, $50 for youth swim pass, and we'll accommodate you the half hour randomly that's outside of our normal scope of operations because you've come to the table and met us in the middle, and we make that happen. No different here with Mustang. If they were to pay that fee, I mean, we'd accept it, and we could do what we always do and get the fields ready and make sure they're ready to play, and that fee structure's no different than we're charging our general public to play baseball.
Okay. But we would have to set that up in next year's budget, correct?
It's not a budgeted item. We don't budget for these things.
But isn't it part of the schedule of fees?
No. I mean, baseball is defined, or not baseball, youth sports is defined in the fee structure, $35 per child. So it's not an addition to.
And another clarification, what council's approving tonight would be an MOU at this point is still subject to negotiations. If council feels that these terms aren't exactly what council prefers to do, we could hold off action to a later meeting, have an opportunity to discuss these items, vet them with the club, and then come back with different terms as council sees fit.
Well, as you add all this up, $8,000 is pretty good. You know, for something for a league that's going to charge a team participating in it.
But, but do we have rec. teams in this age range? My understanding is that?
We did.
We did?
We did, and then this has happened over a period of time, and in a lot of ways has put us out of business.
And so we don't have, the city doesn't have anything to offer our youth in this age?
We have nine to 10, and 11 to 12-year-old baseball, which is the same age groups in which Mustang offers. We had an older group that was the 13 to 15 range age group, and the ad hoc committee, which is a council member How are a part of, supported kind of a staff's position at the time that we were spinning our wheels, and it wasn't worth continuing to have, you know, one team sign up every year to have nobody to play. And so we've vacated that arena and have, for all intensive purposes, administered pretty heavy CPR to keep the nine and 10, and 11, and 12-year-old group solvent. And that's where the IGA with the Brush Rec. Department arose, because we don't have enough people sign up to run our own league, because we don't have but maybe two teams a year. We don't want to take that opportunity from those kids, so we've partnered with Brush Rec. to play against the Brush Rec. teams. The irony in all this is we play Mustang Baseball's teams too, to fill a schedule. We get beat 26 to 2, which is always enjoyable for anybody that plays the sport, and in turn, that league continues to suffer year in, year out because of this taking priority of.
So, Josh, why would people, I guess, go towards Mustang Baseball and want to play Mustang Baseball versus, you know, which costs, I don't know how much money, but obviously much more expensive than the rec. department's 35 bucks? Why would people be more inclined to play that versus ours, or is there a way that both of them could play?
I can't speak specifically as to why, as I don't have a kid that participates or old enough to, but a lot of it's the amount of games played, and it's classified as competitive, and it is a perceived, or a perception that, you know, playing it competitive at nine years old, you know, is a requirement to play college baseball or high school baseball, which, I don't take opinion out of it, but it's, it's not the reality. So, it's evolved, they're good at what they do. I have proposed with them this concept of creating a sort of Morgan County Baseball Association, including Brush, including Wiggins, including New Raymer, Weldon Valley, and having an east and west division. Everybody's, you know, there's a board that's established that has oversight of baseball locally, and we have a legitimately-run baseball association. What they're doing is going to Longmont, playing in the Longmont Baseball Association. The city of Longmont doesn't run a recreational baseball league because the Longmont Baseball Association is solvent, very functional, and, you know, includes that broader area. To have a well-established league and a number of participants, but when Brush runs a league, we're trying to run a league, Wiggins is trying to run a league, Mustang Baseball's running a league in a county of 25,000, the numbers don't work to have four leagues running in a population 25,000 large. So we either have to join forces collectively and make this work, or, you know, we're in the same situation we're in today, and Mustang does what they do, and we try to limp ours along to make sure the 24 or so kids in our age groups have a place to play baseball.
So, if I've understood you correctly, they practice on fields in Fort Morgan, and then they drive and play in Longmont?
Yeah, Longmont Brush. They have an agreement with Longmont in that some of the Longmont teams come to Fort Morgan and play their games here in Fort Morgan. They don't know how many of those games will occur this year. They get the schedule in April. But part of their game request is they're either playing Brush, or Wiggins, or us, or a team out of the Longmont Baseball Association that comes out this way.
So, if we approve this, then the only people who are paying into the upkeep of the fields and the wear and tear and everything else are the 24 or so kids that pay through the city league, is that right?
Yeah, I mean, we've got to maintain the fields regardless. I mean, the grass is going to grow, whether Mustang plays on it, we play on it, or nobody plays on it. You know, the dragging of the fields has to occur, the infield's are weeded out, but it's the prep time associated with the games and practices that arrive with paint and chalk and.
And there's adult programs too. I mean, there's adult softball and some other things that we recover some costs on. So it's not just youth baseball that, that we have a fee structure for.
Right.
Jason, what, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Jason, what other legal things do we need to know about MOUs? And what we can do tonight?
As I mentioned before, you don't necessarily have to take action tonight if you want more information. Jeff mentioned financials. If you want different proposals as to what might work better for both the city and the club, we can come back at a later time. This isn't necessarily something that has to be done or completed tonight. Other legal considerations, I'm not aware of any other opportunities or other instances in the city where we waive electric utility bills for uses of electric. So that's another thing to consider. That's not the general fund at that point, that would be the electric fund that would be waiving fees, and that could cause additional complications.
How many kids would this benefit?
They have nine teams.
Nine teams?
I just interviewed the director guy for something else. So, anyway, they have nine teams, and, like, it's, yeah, they do a good job. And I think we need to, yeah, find something, just, yeah, arrangement that definitely helps Mustang Baseball stay alive, but find a way that is smarter, that, yeah. So I'm, I am so passionate about rec. sports because it's inclusive, and Mustang Baseball has different, yeah, it's different ways to get involved with that than just a little $35 fee in nearby games. So, um, yeah, for tonight, what do you guys want to do?
Well, I think it's a club sport, and I work at a high school, and, you know, the club sports are taken over, and, you know, we're seeing an age where you specialize in one sport, so, you know, if you think if you're 12 years old, you know, you play baseball all year round, you'll get better at it. Well, it may not be the case, and so you're seeing more and more club sports come up. You know, that, right now, the thing I offer is that Morgan Baseball Club offers something that we don't have in our rec. department, whether it be 13 to 15-year-olds. I understand that, you know, we have some 11 and 12-year-olds that play, but, you know, they offer something that we don't currently offer in our rec. department, and so, you know, that is a benefit to our citizens, and so I think we should at least entertain it.
Well, I agree with your points there. I'm just thinking if there, if there's about 15 kids on a team, and it's $35 that they're each not paying to us, that's about $4,500 that we're not seeing, I guess. I think that they, I don't know, I, I feel like they're asking a lot, considering that.
And I guess it's probably an agenda item for a later date to revisit in kind. The concern I have is we continue to give everything free to everybody but our youth participants in our youth programs. We give established businesses and nonprofits for special events, everything at zero cost. We give everything club and established programming what they want at zero cost, and the demographic that needs our help the most, we charge them $35. And I think it's completely contradictory of why the department exists and why it's in existence to serve our broader diverse community. I, as a college athlete, former college coach that had wild success that I won't bore you with here tonight, can tell you that playing club sports at nine years old does not dictate how good you are at 16. If those kids are playing with our rec. kids, our rec. sports programs are the best in the region, our volunteers are the best in the region, but our demographic completely misses out on that because we give all of our resources to organizations that struggle to work with us, to be quite honest.
I'm opposed to giving up the light usage. As Jason points out, and working in the utility departments in the past, that is a ratepayer-based, and as far as in-kind service on that, that impacts our enterprise fund, and so I would, I guess I would, at this point, say if council wants to forego some of the others, but they will pay the electric charge, that's an option out there. It's up to the council to make the motion or decision, but I, that's my input.
That is something we don't have a fee for, which is why we've had to bring it straight to you, that is the new request. We don't have light use in our fee structure.
Exactly.
And the MOU can be negotiated if needed. The one thing Elizabeth and I would highlight is their tournament, you know, a week away, week and a half away, so we wouldn't want to impact that, and historically have never charged them for a tournament. And that is bringing a variety of teams from outside our community to our areas, so that's probably a plus, and we don't want to disrupt that.
So, let me ask you, I'm not real familiar with the Riverside ballparks, but do they have lights?
A and B do.
Okay, so if they're playing a tournament there, could they use the lights then?
Yes, they are.
Do we waive that? Well, I don't, I guess.
That's part of the tournament fee.
Okay.
It's 100 bucks for the tournament fee.
So, so if the light switch on the bottom one just switched to Legion Field, there's a separate light? Why are lights separate for Legion Field, but with Riverside A and B, it's okay to waive the fee there, but I guess I'm just not understanding why we have light, we're charging for lights at Riverside, or at Legion, but not at Riverside?
We could factor in the light use at Legion Field, but it's five days a week, six days a week for two months.
And the Legion Field's a little bit different from the perspective that it's not included in the scheduled fees. We have an agreement with the school district, and they manage that. We let them use it for the high school season, and in exchange, they maintain it and take care of it. And as part of that agreement, we pay for the water and electricity for the high school season. We don't have a separate fee set up for use of Legion Field, per se. We don't have that out there. So Legion Field is kind of its own albatross, if you will, trying to figure out how to manage that, because we do have an agreement with the school district that we're currently using. We don't have an agreement with anybody else to use it, because actually in the summertime, when private teams are using, the school district's still maintaining it and taking care of it. And so, when the school district use ends and private use begins, is one of a question that we're still trying to figure out, where is that dividing line? When is it stop being high school and start being Legion, or start being Mustang Baseball? But I, I guess a point I'd like to make, and I think is really important in this entire conversation, is that I believe that the council, and I believe the staff, is very pro-youth sports. And I think sometimes the message gets out there that we don't want youth sports, and we don't want youth activities, and I don't think that's the case. I don't think that's the case at all. This brings to a point the philosophical or policy question about taxpayers' money and the use of taxpayers' money as it relates to use by the community as a whole. And when we get to exclusive clubs that provide opportunities for a limited group of people that use public resources to do it, the question is, do we support that? And we have, for years and years and years. We've supported the private clubs to provide a service that the city of Fort Morgan has not been able to provide effectively. And, and part of the reason we haven't been able to provide it effectively was stability in the rec. department, which I believe we have had and are working on and making sure that stays there. Right, Elizabeth, you'll be here for years and years to come. Thank you. Don't mean to put you on the spot.
B, it's okay to waive the fee there? But I guess I'm just not understanding why we have light, we're charging for lights at Riverside, or at Legion, but not at Riverside.
We could factor in the light use at Legion Field, but it's five days a week, six days a week for two months.
And the Legion Field's a little bit different from the perspective that it's not included in the scheduled fees. We have an agreement with the school district and they manage that. We let them use it for the high school season and in exchange, they maintain it and take care of it. And as part of that agreement, we pay for the water and electricity for the high school season. We don't have a separate fee set up for use of Legion Field per se. We don't have that out there. So, Legion Field is kind of its own albatross, if you will, trying to figure out how to manage that. Because we do have an agreement with the school district that we're currently using. We don't have an agreement with anybody else to use it because actually in the summertime, when private teams are using, the school district's still maintaining it and taking care of it. And so, when the school district use ends and private use begins, is one of a question that we're still trying to figure out. Where is that dividing line? When is it stop being high school and start being Legion or start being Mustang baseball? But I guess a point I'd like to make and I think is really important in this entire conversation is that I believe that the council and I believe the staff is very pro-youth sports. And I think sometimes the message gets out there that we don't want youth sports and we don't want youth activities. And I don't think that's the case. I don't think that's the case at all. This brings to a point the philosophical or policy question about taxpayers' money and the use of taxpayers' money as it relates to use by the community as a whole. And when we get to exclusive clubs that provide opportunities for a limited group of people that use public resources to do it, the question is, do we support that? And we have for years and years and years. We've supported the private clubs to provide a service that the city of Fort Morgan has not been able to provide effectively. And part of the reason we haven't been able to provide it effectively was stability in the rec department, which I believe we have had and are working on and making sure that stays there. Right, Elizabeth? You'll be here for years and years to come. Thank you. Don't mean to put you on the spot. Josh has been in his position longer than I think the last person in his position has been for probably seven or eight years. And so, there's a reason why these clubs came around and it was stability in those departments and making things move forward. What we're trying to do, I think, is balance those two policies. Because I think council has told us, support youth sports. In the ad hoc committee, the decision was, support youth sports. Let's make it as accessible to as many people as possible and let's support those private clubs and let's partner with those private clubs. And that's where we're trying to blend these things. I don't want the wrong message to get out there that we don't want Mustang baseball, or we don't want Marlins swimming, or we don't want Morgan County basketball, or, I mean, there's several of them out there, the volleyball. We want to partner and work with them to make this as inclusive as possible to as many of the people who are using the public resources as possible. The school district is a public entity just like the city and the taxpayers pay for those facilities and they're used by the private clubs as well. And the taxpayers are paying for all of this. And we want to make sure, I guess, from our perspective, that we're meeting council's expectations, that we are promoting all youth sports. But we're also making it accessible to as many people as possible. And so, you know, the discussion about whether or not it's a good idea or not a good idea to continue to support Mustang baseball, I don't think that that's the question. We need to continue to support Mustang baseball. The question is, how is Mustang baseball going to work with the rec program to help us be more inclusive of more people and helping us develop a program that helps them and helps the community, helps everybody else with the public resources that are being used? And so, I want to make sure we're framing this correctly. I think we need to support Mustang baseball. That's what we do as a city. We support youth. I think that's been a driving policy of the city of Fort Morgan for years. I think that's been the driving policy of the rec department. We support youth sports and youth recreational opportunities. The question is, how do we do it better? And I guess that's how I want to make sure we're framing this argument because, or the discussion, it's not an argument. That's your department now, this discussion, to make sure that we're not losing the purpose of what this MOU does. It helps kids and it gives kids an opportunity to play sports. And that is an important aspect of what we do in the city of Fort Morgan. It's a policy that council has supported for a long time. It costs money, but we do have these balancing things that we're trying to do as staff of making sure that we do it as efficiently with taxpayer money as possible and not allowing people to be excluded who would like to participate. And that's, it gets, that's where we want Mustang baseball to work with us. I think, what happens in Brush, because they have a private group in Brush as well, don't they? How do they run theirs?
Yeah, I don't know for sure. But my understanding is, is Brush requires every one of their, in order to play competitively, you have to play recreationally as a requirement of their leagues. So, if you want to play competitive basketball in Brush, you have to play in the rec league to be eligible to play competitively. Same thing with baseball.
See, and that, that kind of seems a little more fair to me, that if they're paying $35 like our rec kids do, then we would waive all the other fees. And that seems reasonable.
True competitive seasons, the competitive season comes after rec. And you see this with volleyball. Volleyball occurs, you've got all those participants. Club season kicks in in January. Our volleyball season ends in November. Basketball's been a little touch and go, but we've started our season earlier now to accommodate and allow that to occur. And even had a rec team in the NICO League this year, where a variety of kids that wanted to continue to play more basketball as the year went on. But when baseball starts in March, we're just getting soccer underway. You know, many years ago, baseball was starting at the same time. But again, for us to put our resources to all of that in March to run a baseball season for two teams and soccer at the same time, we've started our rec season a little later in the year. So, kids don't have to make that choice. They play soccer. If they want baseball, it's still an opportunity. At that point, we're really getting into where our only option for games is amongst the competitive groups. And that's why we see some of the scores we see. But, you know, that opportunity's still there and we're not completely taking that from those kids. And I would echo Jeff's point. Mustang baseball is very solvent. It's a very productive thing for our community. That's not my point. There is a way to work together. There has to be a willingness to want to evolve what's occurred over the last five to six years.
Josh, do you know how much each kid has to pay as far as fees for Mustang baseball?
It's around $200. I don't know the exact number.
It's 120 to register and then that doesn't include equipment and uniforms.
Yeah.
And the reason I was asking is, you know, Dan's bringing up the $35. I was thinking, well, you know, these kids are paying even a heck of a lot more than that and everything too. And so...
But it's families who want it. Like, they want to be in a competitive league. They want to play 100 games. They want, so...
And compared to, compared to some of the Denver area leagues, that's a drop in the bucket.
Yeah.
Very.
So, it's still, yeah, super affordable for area families.
Very affordable and competitive. The team I coached, it was $5,200 annually for a softball team.
So, as we're forming, yeah, kind of where we want to move forward, Lisa says, like the mayor said, I too don't think it's a matter of not supporting, rather the level we are supporting. I'd like to see an equitable agreement, especially on the utilities.
And that, with that, taking the utility out, that's still about a $6,000 in-kind contribution to the tournament, which is still pretty substantial. Any other comments or discussion?
You know, I think that's workable for the time being, but I don't know. In the future, I'd like to see something, something more, something else, something additional. You know, even if it's 35 bucks a kid that they have in their program, that would be the equivalent of what we would expect a kid outside of the program to pay in order to maintain and run the facilities and manage the program. So, I'm not opposed to passing something tonight, but in the future, I'd like to see a different kind of contribution from Mustang baseball.
You know, I'm going to say it the wrong way, but if he levels the playing field, if they're actually paying a fee, their business model changes and we now have more people looking to participate with us because they can't afford to, or, you know, their group has grown based on our inability to do our jobs in the rec department, as Jeff highlights, over a period of 10, 12 years. And, you know, I don't know the exact history, but there was kind of five rec people in a three-year period and not a community service director from 2011 until my arrival. I mean, there's some history of turnover in the department. It's a failure on our part to do our jobs, but by giving it all to them, there's no real reason to come to the table.
So, because we haven't formally talked about fee structures moving forward with in-kind donations, and this has been what we've done in years past, I think we just need to honor kind of what we've done in the past tonight and then make sure, yeah, staff sets up a good meeting to see what baseball looks like in Morgan County moving forward, where it's more equitable for, because, yeah, I didn't even think about how those boys don't pay in at all to the fields, whereas all the rec kids do pay in. So, even though it's just a little $35 fee, yeah, it's crazy that those kids don't pay in and use the fields. So, anyway, so that's my opinion for tonight. Just, yeah, move forward with what we've done in the past, but with the direction in the future to, yeah, next year needs to look different. More, yeah, collaboration and, yeah, more equitable, so...
I think equitable, in my opinion, is that pay the light usage and they're still getting a $6,000 in-kind contribution for this year and we'll address it next year. My two cents.
And next year, I'd like to see someone from Mustang Baseball who can actually answer some questions. This is kind of a big ask and for them not to be here for this. This just kind of raises a question in my mind.
Can we require them to be here? I mean...
No, you can't. But generally speaking, you can't require them.
Well, and I'm sure that their opinion is, it's just something we do every year and so we just turn it in again. And I wouldn't have anticipated...
Well, to the spread of high school baseball season has started, so he's probably wrapped up with getting ready for his season.
I believe first game's tomorrow or Thursday.
They were on the field when I came by.
One of the things we want to make sure we don't do here is that, you know, because we've done this for so many years and it's been kind of something that we've done, you know, they're planning on things to continue to run the way they are. And I think you want to take that into consideration as well. And I think what council member Howe said about, you know, doing what we've done helps them kind of keep that status quo and then they can plan and we can start talking to them earlier. Because we definitely don't want to do something that's going to impair their ability to, this year, to continue and operate the way that they have. Because, you know, we definitely want to support what they're doing. But I understand the issue with the electric and the lights. I understand where you're coming with that. That wasn't something we did.
Council member North Rip says, great job by staff, though. Your effort is appreciated. So, yeah, I, as far as for the families who would have to pick up this $2,000 for this year, if we, if we wanted to add the electric, that would mean, yeah, passing that on to those families when they weren't expecting it. So, I think, yeah, if we, I agree, yeah, with, yeah, kind of status quo this year, but not adding those extra costs.
Probably already assess their fees to the participants. And if we're going to change the MOA such as making it less, then they wouldn't have had that already figured into their fee schedule as far as what they're charging the kids that are participating. So, I would think that we probably, just as you were saying, go ahead and do it the way that it's presented today because that's what they're expecting. But it also at the same time say that it needs to be negotiated or looked at more in depth.
I don't think so with the utility.
Submitting some of their financials would...
I think the utilities needs to be looked at before we say, okay. I agree that we've always done the tournaments and the games and the practices, but we haven't done the lights before. That's a new thing this year, is it not?
Yeah.
So, I would say that we do the tournaments, the games, the practices, but the lights, take that off the table.
Well, if that hasn't been something that's been part of the fee before, then I would think that that is something, again, new and...
But it's something that they would have to expect to, at some point, pay some portion of something. They can't just assume we're going to just say, yes, here you go. It's all or nothing. That's why it's presented to us, is for us to say what we will or will not pay.
But they've already started. I mean, you said they have their first tournament in 10 days or...
First tournament's a week from Saturday.
So, can they resubmit with the light usage, coming and talking to us more, talking about why they need this later on?
Yeah, and light usage doesn't impact them until June. So, if we had to revisit that and do understand the, the light use isn't specific to '09, '10, '11, '12. This is for Legion Field for what historically has been the American Legion baseball program. And now with the Legion no longer, I think there's still some support there. I don't know for sure. But in that program running, it's now being run by Mustang baseball. So, that's an evolution of their group to put that age group under their umbrella for summer use. But that has no impact on the tournament. That has no impact on the annual request that Mustang baseball makes to the youth. The light request is specifically for June and July for the summer use for what has historically been referred to as Legion baseball. So, we could bring that back with some modifications if so.
And we don't offer rec sports at that age, correct?
No, and for the exact reason we struggle to keep our, that age group, our younger age groups alive with club competition as we're competing with the high school. And there's one high school soccer team for a reason because it gets competitive at that point. And, you know, when, if you've been told you're not good enough to play high school soccer, you're not interested in playing recreational soccer at 16 and nor is there, you know, 45 or 55 of those kids to play recreational soccer at that age. So, and a lot of that was ad hoc recommendation as well. We kind of get out of the sports business when kids get into junior high because fortunately for our kids here locally, the junior high has a robust athletic program, which doesn't necessarily exist everywhere. And they can play football and basketball and volleyball and so on and so forth. So, again, it's not really our space and we turn it over to the district at that point.
What does council desires?
Well, I think we should in-kind it this year and then maybe have a discussion about next year. And, because I'm willing to bet they've already planned their budget, sent out their fees and collective fees, and they weren't planning on a different $2,000 or $2,100. And if ultimately that's going to cause them to pay more, I understand that, you know, it's unique, but it's something that has just happened with Legion Field. So, we give it a year, see how it goes, and then go on it next year and we'll look to negotiate.
Go for it, Clint.
I can't make one.
Your honor, I'd offer a resolution to approve the in-kind waiver to Mustang baseball for a total of $8,040.
Second.
I have a motion by Clint Anderson, a second by Kevin Lindell.
Would that be a resolution? Well, it's not over $10,000. Never mind.
So, can we add to it before we vote?
So, the process would be you have a motion on the table. And Jason, you can correct me if I'm wrong. You've got a motion and a second. So, you would have to, the maker of the motion would have to do a friendly amendment. So, if they're not willing to do an amendment to the motion on the front end of that, then you would have to vote on the motion. If it didn't pass, then you could come back with a new motion. And if it was seconded, then you could vote on that. So, you can, we can be formal or less formal...
Robert would be very proud of your resolution.
Wouldn't.
Robert's rules.
Yeah, Robert would be great. We don't, we don't follow Robert's rules precisely, but that's generally the process that you would go through.
So, Clint, would you make a friendly...
Amendment.
Would you make a friendly amendment to your resolution to add that, to add the understanding that a formal, like, I don't know, sit down, formal...
Negotiation.
Formal negotiations be made with the team for next year's... Electric use.
Just the electric use or in general?
Well, yeah.
Part of the existing MOU has a required organizational meeting annually so we can...
Did you have a meeting this year?
Yeah.
Okay.
So...
So, I guess I'm confused. Why do we need to add that if we already have a meeting?
Well, we know things have to be different moving forward as far as fee structure and working together. So, every kid who wants to play baseball and, that uses our fields, has an equitable, I guess, buy-in. Right now, it's not equitable. Right now, the kids who are paying 35 bucks, they're paying more for those fields than Mustang baseball kids. So, it's not equitable. So, I'm saying when we have this formal meet, and I guess it's already written in, but, so how would the language look for that if it's just...
So, the friendly amendment at this point is requesting that, so right now, as I understand it, there's a motion on the table to approve the MOU as presented tonight.
Learning.
And there's been a second to that. The friendly amendment is to include into that motion that we approve it this year, but that we add to it that there needs to be formal negotiations and discussions as it relates to how we do in-kind services in the future.
Precisely.
Okay. I would like to add a friendly amendment to my motion that I motioned earlier to, there needs to be a meeting, as it says in the MOU, that we'll be discussing in-kind services, particularly the light usage at Legion Field.
And a smile.
I'm making sure I'm covering.
And a smile. There we go.
For the kids.
Just as a point of reference, couldn't he just have said, I accept that friendly amendment?
Yeah, but that's okay.
You did good, Clint.
Always learning something. Always learning something.
But he did a good job.
Yeah.
So, it says, resolution on the script. This is a motion.
One more time.
Yeah, so it is a motion. It can proceed as a motion. I know it's resolution on the agenda. That's why I asked. But I believe, and Jason, correct me if I'm wrong, that it can be passed by motion or resolution because there's no requirement based upon the amount of... the amount of money that they're requesting that it be passed by resolution.
Correct.
So you can move forward with just a motion.
Does it, can I just switch it to resolution then?
You can.
Let's switch it to resolution. Friendly, resolution.
Okay, roll call.
We now have a friendly resolution with a, what's, is the second friendly or unfriendly? That's, no, I'm just kidding.
Is everybody ready? Light him up, Mr. B. That resolution carries on a vote of five to two, with Councilmembers Casto and Northrup voting no.
Thank you for a lot of your time.
Thanks, Elizabeth.
Thank you so much.
Next, we have a presentation on possible action on a resolution granting a revocable license to allow All About the Smoke Restaurant to use the adjacent city well parking. Mr. Wells?
Thank you very much, Your Honor. This has nothing to do with baseball, so it should go very quickly. It's not about the kids. But it is about barbecue, and that's really important in this community. Well, at least it is to me. So I've received comments, and I'm sure some of you have received comments, about the barriers that we've put out to keep people from driving over the city property right next to the All About the Smoke Restaurant that recently opened. Part of the reason why we did that was, that used to be a wellhouse. It used to not be vacant. We tore the wellhouse down. We don't use it anymore. And we were contemplating using that property for the purpose of the build-out of our fiber optic system. After we've finished the preliminary engineering, that's not going to be a property that we need for any infrastructure. And as a result, we've gone and talked with All About the Smoke owners, and have come up with an agreement that would allow them to temporarily use that property for parking, to make it more accessible and allow more people to come and eat at their restaurant, which makes a lot of sense for everybody. And they've agreed to certain things. I know, if you have any questions about the agreement, Jason did a really good job drafting this and reviewing it, making sure that we met all the legal requirements. But essentially, not in the agreement itself, they've agreed to put parking stops, wheel stops, within 14 days of the agreement. They'll also provide ADA parking and signage within 30 days of the approval agreement after tonight. And then we'll remove all the blockades tomorrow, if council approves this, and we'll put one-way signage and put it all together after council approves this tonight. So tomorrow, we'll have better parking at All About the Smoke, if you approve this. One thing that's really good about this is, All About Smoke's been very patient, as we worked through our process to understand how we needed to use that property in the future. We appreciate their patience and working with city staff, and I think this is going to be a win-win for everybody. And down the road, we have a process for selling city-owned property, and if we determine we don't need it at all in the future, it could be a possibility of selling that portion to them. But right now, we have this agreement in place. So are there any questions?
Just one thing to add to this process. Part of the reason we barricaded it, the traditional use, as Mr. Wells stated, was for a wellhouse, and so CDOT owns that right-of-way. And so for us to open it up to just traffic coming in and out of it, wouldn't have been something that was consistent with its previous use. So part of this whole process, and the reason why it's a one-way only coming out, is to satisfy CDOT, who holds all of the cards when it comes to their right-of-way.
So is this, like, in perpetuity?
It's revocable within so much time. So it's not a perpetual agreement. It's a revocable agreement. And we do that intentionally. Now, it will become perpetual if we end up selling the property to them. But right now, it's just, they can use it while we're trying to figure out what's the best use of that property is down the road.
Anybody else have any questions?
No, it looks good.
Would entertain a resolution?
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution granting a revocable license to allow All About the Smoke Restaurant to use the adjacent city well property for parking.
Second.
Have a resolution by Christine Casto, and a second by Allison Howe. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Next, we have a presentation on possible action on bids for water distribution projects. Mr. Nation?
Have you picked up on the substitution?
Have a reservation.
I neither have anything to say about baseball tonight, so...
Welcome to the podium.
We will have more discussion about abandoned wellhouses. Just on a side note, we do have a couple of other locations that we've completely removed wellhouses from, and still have ownership of property that we will need to discuss with council at some time on what to do with those. Now that we've gone through our fiber design, we've started to make these decisions about where we do and don't need space for certain pieces of our fiber project, so. But tonight, first, in front of you, we have, it's that time of the year where we need to start looking at what are, what water distribution projects we want to tackle. We generally do this in conjunction with the Streets Department. We try not to come back into a brand-new paved street and replace the water line after we paved it. So we work with JW and Brad with some of our rebuilds and decide where to focus some of those efforts. Tonight, you will see in Eric's memo, the corner of town that would be over by the Optimus Park is kind of where they're looking at redoing the streets, and we do have several areas over there that we do need to rebuild some lines. So we went out to bid this year, not knowing what our labor costs would be. You'll see in front of you, it seems like this is fairly cheap for water line rebuilds, but this is just for the labor part of the rebuilding of the system. We've already started to buy the pieces and parts necessary to do these projects. So we bid it in projects from, what did Eric do, A to E. And what we wanted to do was be able to see, once we got to the bottom line, how many of the projects we would be able to do. If we weren't able to, between projects and materials, not do all five of the projects, we would cut one of them and then just do what was allowed within the budget. After reviewing the bids, we got some very favorable numbers back, and so we feel that we can do all five of the projects within this year's budget. And so we had two companies, we actually had several companies that showed up to the pre-bid meeting, including one out of Wyoming, which was kind of interesting and refreshing all at the same time. But when it came down to it, we had only two companies that bid on these projects, both of them local companies. Both of them I can't say enough about, very reputable. They, both of them do a lot of good work for us. But, so when it came down to it, we just went head and would like to go with Ransom Boone Excavating. Ransom's company has put in probably the lion's share of the water mains in the city since I've been, you know, working in these parts, and enjoy working with his crews. And so, so tonight, you have in front of you that request, and so we're looking for approval to accept the bids from Ransom Boone Excavating, in the amount not to exceed $260,000 to complete the 2017 Water Distribution System Projects A through E. I'd be happy to answer any questions about those. I did receive one question about what exactly is water looping, because somebody was concerned or didn't understand that concept. And a couple of these projects, when we have areas of town that basically have a single water feed going into them, you have issues with not having fresh water through the pipes. You also then have issues with pressure also. And so we try to reconnect back into some of those more isolated portions of town with secondary pipes. That forces water to continuously flow through there, keeps it fresh, like everybody should be enjoying, and also increases the pressure for those areas. And a couple of these projects are specifically being done to create and bolster the loops that we have in our distribution system.
Cool.
And you're in the process of buying all the materials for these?
Yeah, we have, I think Mr. Hoffman has the majority of the pipe in already, and he's getting the rest of the mega lugs and all the connecting pieces and everything in that we will need to complete them. Jim Boone has assured me that he will basically work in front of the paving contractor. He's aware of their schedule, and so we'll be able to just go into Vicki and Ninth and basically replace water lines in front of the paving crews.
So I noticed, does that include the boring under, for Saunders Road?
Yes.
Also with the upgrade or upsize pipe?
Yes.
Okay. Would entertain a resolution?
Almost. We have an important question from Councilmember Northrup. Will we be doing any other rebuilds outside of the street projects?
Water-wise, you mean? We have one, one maintenance project that we're doing out in the industrial park, that we've been working on since last year that we need to complete. The frost caught up with us last year, and we had to stop working on that. It's to help loop basically where La Prino gets their water feed from, and it's a section of road that we don't, it's not paved. And so we tried to get in there last year, but then one of those early snows caught up with us, and so we've got to get out there and finish that up. That's one of those, all, all those pieces and parts have been sitting over in the shed all winter long that we need to get in the ground. But that's...
Just those six?
Yeah, just those ones.
Thank you.
Would entertain a resolution?
Your Honor, I offer a resolution for the approval to accept the bid from Ransom Boone Excavating, in the amount not to exceed $260,000 to complete the 217 Water Distribution System Projects A through E. Second.
Resolution by Allison Howe, and a second by Christine Casto. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Next, we have a presentation on possible action on bids for fiber optic conduit. Mr. Nation?
This is the last piece of material that we need to get ordered this year for our fiber work. We had been, we had bought a bunch of conduit last year, and we kind of overlooked the fact that we're actually putting in two conduits everywhere, partly my fault when working with Mr. Hoffman. And so we decided at the last minute, we're like, well, we need to get a bunch more ordered. And so Doug went ahead and put together the bid that you see in front of you. Lot of companies wanting to sell you fiber optics conduit, as you can see, and very competitive prices. You know, everybody's just within a cent or two of each other. We're looking for approval, use the unit bid price for conduit from Wesco, and the amount not to exceed $44,856. And this is the company that we've been buying most of our conduit through traditionally. They've been kind of low bidder for years, so.
They had two bids. Was there a major difference in the materials from the two different bids?
No, it was, what was the deal with that? There was a little bit different type of conduit that they were looking to sell us, and, you know...
Kind of tracing wire or something?
Yeah.
I would entertain a resolution?
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution accepting the unit bid for the HDP conduit from Wesco, in the amount not to exceed $44,856.
Second?
Have a resolution by Christine Casto, and a second by Allison Howe. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you for that. And the construction portion of the fiber project did go out to bid today, so...
Cool.
Now we'll be waiting to see who bids on actually putting all this stuff in the ground that you guys are letting us buy, so thank you.
Next, we have a presentation on possible action on bids for water augmentation services.
Okay, make sure I get the right memo in front of me, so. As you can see in my memo, the city of Fort Morgan, we have different needs outside of some of the expertise that we have in-house. Couple of weeks ago, you saw that we hired or placed under contract a consultant that basically does all of our electrical, you know, engineering and stuff for the electric utility. Here, what I'm bringing in front of you is, the city uses a consultant, or has used a consultant for the last several years, to help us with some of the demands that we have within the city's augmentation plan. And that also then trickles down to some of the other water-related assets that the city controls. Adaptive Resources has been that consultant for the last three years, and they provide us with that level of outside expertise that we like to have. There's a lot of things that we have to look at as a city when we have a plan for augmentation. There's not necessarily a lot of legal work and defense work, but there are other water court cases that come up on a fairly regular basis that we need to look into to see if there's any type of risk for the way that we run our system. Adaptive Resources is the type of company that we have used in the past to help us analyze those type of things and decide whether it's the water court case worth getting into. We also have outside legal consultation that helps us with those decisions. We've made modifications to our augmentation plan, and we've had to do the associated engineering work with that. Adaptive Resources was the one that helped us with our last update to the augmentation plan, helped provide all the background information that went out to the people that were objectors in that case. They also helped us with all of our compliance issues with the state of Colorado that came out of that change. Another one of those agencies that we deal with, once we got in, you know, not in their crosshairs, but once we got on their scope, they decided they needed to make a bunch of change to the way that we do our accounting practices and with the well usage and everything. And so Adaptive Resources was the company that we used. We got to the end of their three years, and so we went back out to bid again, to see if there was anybody else interested. We did have another company out of Denver that put in a proposal, Applegate Group. Me, on my professional level, I've worked with Applegate Group, very reputable company. The president of Applegate Group is, also works with Northern Waters, on their board, and so have always had a very good relationship with them. But when it came down, you know, to making a decision what was best for the city of Fort Morgan, I think continuing our relationship with Adaptive Resources is definitely the way that we need to go. They do have offices here in Fort Morgan and in Scotts Bluff, Nebraska. Heath is, Heath Coons is here tonight. Was kind of curious. He knew that we had a bunch of new council members, and said that he would come in tonight and be willing to answer any questions, if you had them directly for him. But it's my recommendation that we extend our contract with them for these type of services and have them, so we can call upon them when we need that. It's something that we don't necessarily need a lot of in some years, but some years we might. It just depends on what's going on in the world of water. And as you guys can see, sometimes I'm in front of you, and I talk a lot, and sometimes I don't. So it just depends. So, so tonight, Heath is here. If you would like to have him show up, he'd be more than happy to. I mean, Heath is an active member in our community. He sits on the Airport Advisory Board. He helps us on the Water Advisory Board already. And so, and, but that is my recommendation, and so at this point, I'd take any questions.
I'll bring Heath up, because I have a question. Since I'm one of these new people on council, my question is just Reader's Digest version of augmentation planning, like what does that look like for an average citizen?
Your Honor, do I have a time limit on that?
Let's see, yeah. Like your elevator speech, the elevator speech of an augmentation plan.
Yeah, thanks. I appreciate that. Well, good evening. For those of you who I don't know, my name is Heath Coons. I have a company here in town called Adaptive Resources. We are a full-service water resources company. We are anything from hydrologists to GIS professionals to geologists and anything in between. We've been doing work for the city on and off. I think, me personally, without my company, probably for well over 10 years now. And as my company, the last three years, we started business in about 2011 in this industry, though I've been doing it pretty much my entire career. For Councilman Howe's benefit, the water augmentation is essentially the requirement by the state of Colorado that when wells are operated, they must be integrated into the same system as, as all other water rights in the state of Colorado, meaning surface water rights is most what that's pointed to. When you look at surface water rights, they can diverge and take water, and they're operating on the prior appropriation system that is part of the constitution of the state of Colorado. That prior appropriation system is based on the idiom of first in time and first in right, meaning that you, the first person to get here and stake their claim has the most senior water right, and they are entitled to it above everybody else who's junior to them. Wells were integrated into that system in about 1969, and it took them until the 1970s to really get the entire process worked out. In and about, is that 93 or 95 for the city? 95, 1995 for the city. I think you started in 93. The city had wells that they were using as their water... The city had wells that they were using as their water source for drinking, among other things, and were augmenting, were augmenting those through a couple of different ways. When the well was operated to drink or to water a baseball field, the, to water, to water anything, when that water is pumped, it has effects on the South Platte River, much like a surface water right does. We have to offset those effects in very particular ways and very highly technical ways that I can bore you with for hours upon hours. But when we offset those effects at the river, that is what is the basics of an augmentation plan. I think it was probably three or four years ago that I gave the council a pretty long presentation on the basics of your augmentation plan when we were starting to do some changes to it, so.
And that might be a good thing to do for the new council members at some point, is go over all the water stuff, and it's, it is complicated, and it does take a lot of expertise, and I will just add my two cents that Heath is very capable of doing what he does for us, and we really appreciate his services in the past. We bring him in on other special projects at times that we need him and his expertise, and it's great to have a local company that we can go to. Most of the companies that do this are out of Denver, and we're very fortunate to have his company in our community and to have him here. But I have one question for Heath. Heath, tonight, who is your favorite, who's your favorite client tonight?
Who's my favorite client tonight?
Yeah.
Well, I only have one client, and that's the city of Fort Morgan.
You should have said, "I have no favorite."
Oh, no.
That's why I said tonight, we could qualify it tonight.
You guys pay me to say I have, you're my favorite. Any other questions, I'm more than happy to answer anything particular. We, you know, from a general standpoint, the city's plan is very solid, very, very solidified. The long-term planning strategies are always there. I think our role is to really just help Brent along with facilitating those, helping the Water Board in facilitating those longer-term strategies is where we like to, where we like to concentrate, but there's also that fact that there are some day-to-day and month-to-month operations that the city does need some expertise in us to kind of continue to assist with, and I think that's what this service provides with the city. And so we try to stay up on that as much as, as much as anybody in the, in the area, and it is a amazingly complex subject over time, and I think, I think that's, that's where, that's where your benefit comes in.
Well, as complex as water law is in Colorado, we need some expertise. It's take years and years and years to understand it, so.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Heath. I would entertain a resolution accepting.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution for you to sign a services agreement with Adaptive Resources, Inc. for Water Augmentation Consulting Services for our city.
Second?
Have a resolution by Allison Howe, and a second by Christine Castovo, vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you for all that.
Thanks, guys. Next, we have a presentation of possible action on acceptance of the 2018 budget calendar. Mr. Wells?
Yeah, it looks like the scouts are leaving. That's just, we just got to the budget calendar. This is like the most interesting part. Glad to have you here.
Thanks for coming, scouts.
Pursuant to the council's rules of procedure, I'm required to present to you for your approval budget calendar that outlines the process it will go through in 2017 to adopt the 2018 budget. We've already done a few preliminary things in January and February. Want to thank council and staff for your efforts in moving some of these priorities forward. And so as part of that tonight, if, and in the packet, you have, tonight is the first night of presentation of the calendar, so we can discuss those dates. Generally speaking, the second meeting in April, we'll talk about priorities from the February 28th retreat that we had and discuss how we're going to move forward. We've got some really good ideas from staff already that we discussed last week, and we'll continue to discuss to bring those back to council. May 16th, I know this is going to sound a little bit weird, but we discuss revenues almost six or seven months before we actually start the budget, and we've been very conservative in the past, and it's, and it's worked very well for us. One of the things I'd like to point out tonight, and I don't know if it's worth pointing out or not, but out of all the communities that responded in a recent survey of how they're doing with sales tax and their future projections, we actually had the largest decrease in sales tax year-over-year than any other community that reported on that. I think we were at 10.9%. We were the only one in double digits. But if you look at our budget, and this is the good part of that, we budget conservatively, and it did not affect the services that we provide to the citizens. We haven't had to lay anybody off. We haven't had to say we're not plowing between, you know, 7:00 PM and 7:00 AM like some governmental entities have decided to do. Our services have remained intact because we do start that budgeting process in May and talk about what we're going to do. So self-insurance fund, and I guess instead of going through all these, does council have any concerns or changes that they would propose related to this? One thing you're going to see different this year, we always have every department manager come up and present. One of the things that I think is very important is accountability, and one of the things that our department managers are great at is being accountable for the money that they spend, the money from the ratepayers and the taxpayers. And I can tell you, there are, there is not a single manager in this organization that doesn't know where they're spending their money and how they're spending it, and I think it's great for them to come up and present to council. Based upon conversations and discussions in my vision, we're going to start providing an annual report, a short annual report. We're coming up with the process on how we're going to do that so that it's fair for everybody, but essentially when Doak Dup comes up and presents the park budget like he normally would and tell you about what's great about the parks, he'll also submit a short annual report for council to review and make a short verbal presentation of that report and answer any questions that you have as part of the packet. And I think that that's going to be a good way for council to see a bigger picture of what's happening in these departments. We were doing the monthly reports, and they were helpful, but they didn't put things into context, and we had a lot of discussion about what makes sense. So we're going to try this this year. It may make the presentations a little bit longer. We're going to try and keep them, I know Clint, it's.
We got a timer, though. We're good, we got a timer, so.
Yes, we do. We're, we're going to have an annual report from each of the departments when they come up. Some may be a little more entailed than others, but we want to just do a basic outline of what that should look like and then see how it goes. So other than that, you're going to see what you saw last year, because this is an election year. We don't go around and do all of the tours that will start next year, and so we're looking forward to another great budget year. I am. I don't know about you, but I love budget. It's great.
I didn't use to, but once I found out finance was fun, then it was.
Yeah, budget isn't boring, that's for sure. Finance is fun, and budget isn't boring. No tours this year. No tours this year. Tours next year.
What about the tooting of horns? Are we going to?
That's going to be, yes, we'll still be tooting horns. That'll be part of the annual report. I don't want to take out any of the horn tooting. I think everybody appreciates that. I know I do, and staff really enjoys it. I know some of the managers, they just live for that. Horn tooting. They've been warned, yes, they've been warned. So if you're okay with what's been presented, we can always modify this as we go along if, if we need more time to do things, we can always modify this. This is just what I have to present on what I propose we should do, and we can modify it down the road. But if you're okay with this, you can, you know, pass the resolution, adopting this as our formal budget calendar and move forward. Any questions?
Do we need a resolution or a motion or anything?
A resolution's good.
Take it, Dan.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution that we accept the budget calendar as proposed.
Second?
Have a resolution by Dan Marler, and a second by Allison Howe, vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
And you still have time on your timer?
I will save that time for the next.
You're done.
I wish to reserve that time for my rebuttal.
The attorney's over here. Next is the public comment for audience participation for things not on the agenda. Do you care to speak to council? Seeing none, we'll have reports by officials and staff.
Happy to report tonight to city council that we are the proud owners of 100 acres and water rights just across the street, so if you want to clap for that, that's a big deal. We've been working on that for six years. It's been a long time coming, and we've got a lot of plans. We presented to council, we didn't close yet, but at the last meeting, we talked a little bit about what we were going to do with that property and some of the plans, and really excited. I know the economic development department's excited. I know the utilities department's excited. We're all excited. It's, it's, the 100-acre wood will now be developed. So along with that, want to thank the Parks Department, give them kudos. We, we had a citizen call on Saturday, really concerned about a tree in their front yard that was one of our trees, had a crack in it, was groaning and moaning, and they were really concerned it was going to fall on their house, and, you know, council member called me, got in touch with Doak, and within probably 15 minutes, we had city staff on a weekend out there checking out the tree, making sure it's going to be safe. Then when we heard that there were going to be high winds on Sunday, they went out actually on Sunday and made sure that it got a really good haircut and wouldn't fall down, and then they took care of it the next day. But, you know, one of the things that we do well in the city is provide exceptional customer service, and that's a really good example. I want to thank Doak and the Parks Department. The winds that we've had, I'd hate to, would have hated to see that tree fall in on somebody's house, and they went out as soon as they heard and took care of it. And from a risk management perspective, that is the right thing to do, isn't it? So very, want to thank the Parks Department and their good efforts in safety and protecting the community, so. Other than that, I know Brent had a couple things.
Can I, can I ask a question?
You sure can, yeah.
Yes, thank you for doing that service. In, in a situation, let's say we don't catch it, and a tree, one of our trees falls on a house.
Yeah.
Where's the city's liability in that?
Well, it comes down to governmental immunity, and, you know, Jason can talk a little bit about that, but it's basically, did you know or should you have known that it was falling apart?
Exactly, sovereign immunity. The king can do no wrong is the doctrine, but basically we're required to maintain things at status quo, and we're not typically liable for very many things unless we knew it was a dangerous condition and did nothing. There are some caveats, and, you know, for those listening at home, we do have SIRS who vets those very carefully for us to make sure the city's not accepting any responsibility where we shouldn't, because at the end of the day, it's the taxpayers that are paying for those things. If we get sued and have a big payout, that comes out of everybody's pocket in the community.
And one of the good things about this situation for all of our viewing public is that if you do see a condition that we may not be aware of, let us know. Call a council member, call my office, call anybody. We, we want to know if there's a situation that we should be aware of, that we should, you know, to take care of it, because the last thing we want is for somebody to get hurt or property to be damaged, and we'll get out there and take care of it. And I really think the Parks Department went above and beyond to make sure that they did this right, so.
Thank you.
I just had a couple things tonight, along those same lines. The, the electric department reached out to Highline Electric in northeast Colorado because it's their electric system that's in the heart of the, that fire that's going on up there. They said they were fortunate because of the amount of wind, it actually blew past most of their poles before it actually did any fire damage to them. They said they lost, at last count, they were only down about 15 poles. For those of you that remember the fire that burned down in the Last Chance area, they burned up several hundred. And so, and we lent some assistance back then when that. That was one of those where Doug Linton reached out to his counterparts to see if there was anything that we could do. They greatly appreciated the city of Fort Morgan trying to lend some assistance with their issue that they have going on up there. On another note, just real quickly on NISP, you may have seen a little bit of publicity coming out of the Fort Collins area. The Fort Collins City Council took a vote just a couple of weeks ago, it was a six-to-one vote, in favor of basically entering into negotiations with NISP and Northern Water on the project itself. This is very good news for the participant group. I wanted to make you aware of this. Staff to address council about the issue, and the comments that were made from Fort Collins staff is basically, NISP is going to get a permit, we need to just make sure that we're at the table when it comes time to see that everything's done correctly. And so, and that's always been the participant's stance is that, you know, we're not here to do this project to harm anybody, and we just want to do what's right and make sure everything's done by the, what the Corps of Engineers is making us do. And so it was a big change in the position that Fort Collins has had in the past. There's been definitely some opposition that's come down from that direction on our project, so we felt that was a very positive step for the project as a whole. We'll be having some more updates, so we'll be coming along this summer. Things continue to move along in a positive direction with the project, and we'll definitely be coming back with more discussions about funding, timelines, and stuff like that, but we'll save those for another night. Okay? Thank you.
I think that's, that's it, unless anybody else had any announcements or any questions from council? John, did you, I guess, did the roadwork start on Sherman and Platt?
No, it was postponed until tomorrow because of the winds. I posted that on the website and social media.
Bids, meetings, and announcements, Mr. Brennan?
Thank you, Your Honor. The city is currently accepting sealed bids for 2017 fertilizer product and application services until 2:30 PM on March 9th, two irrigation well houses until 3:45 PM on March 9th, a four-wheel-drive, three-quarter-ton crew cab pickup until 2:45 PM on March 14th, and aerobic digester aeration piping system to be installed at the wastewater treatment plant until 2:45 PM on March 17th, and a four-wheel-drive, half-ton pickup until 3:45 PM on March 23rd. And this just came out today, the fiber backbone construction project until 4:30 PM on April 6th. Under meetings, the Planning Commission is scheduled to meet March 13th at 4:30 PM here at City Hall. The Senior Center Advisory Board is scheduled to meet March 14th at 1:30 PM at the Senior Center, and the Library Advisory Board is scheduled to meet March 20th at 4:30 PM in the Museum Community Room. The next city council regular meeting will be March 21st at 6:00 PM here at City Hall.
Next on the agenda is an executive session for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations, and/or instructing negotiators under CRS Section 24-6-4024E, and following additional details are provided for identification purposes. Sale of property. I would entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Your Honor, I would make a motion that we go into executive session.
Second? I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We will adjourn to executive sessions.